Gosh, we're not starting on time today.
...the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
So, I'm here today to discuss the license plate, license tax fees. So, would you like to make the lead?
Uh, well, I guess I started this discussion probably a couple of months ago now with just a couple of emails that were basically responses to some complaints from some residents that we had. And then I, and then I got ahold of a annual report from one of my colleagues who, much to my surprise, was getting over a million dollars a year in revenue from the permissive sales tax in his county. And decided to bring that to the attention of the board as, basically, what was crystallized for me during my last union negotiation was our picture of revenue. And that picture is still not good or struggling. But, basically, what's happened over the last several years is that we have, and it's not just me, it's everybody in this business who depends on gas tax revenue for part of their base of operations. We have experienced a decline in gas tax revenues. We are still under the revenue level that we had in 2008. And prior to 2008, our revenue levels were increasing at about a rate of one and a half to two and a half percent a year, every year, like clockwork. Dependable. It was a nice little hedge against inflation. However, that is gone. And there's probably several factors contributing to that, one of which is the current state of the economy, two of which is the advent of hybrids and even all electrics on the road today, which needless to say, hybrids use quite less gas than regular motors, and all electrics use none. And we are getting more and more of those. So, all three of those factors coupled together to present a downturn in our gas tax revenue picture, which we've experienced now for five years. And hopefully, that'll change. I don't know. Maybe it won't. Maybe that's the new future. But, the problem is that it's disturbing to us because, you know, we've depended on that revenue for some time. That kind of realizing the revenue situation that I was in, what, three out of the last, three out of the last five years, my employees in the teachers' union have accepted a zero percent increase. Because I negotiated from the perspective that our revenue went down and I didn't have any money to give. So, they accepted by negotiation and agreement a zero percent for it. That's never happened in my department before. That was the first. So, that was my way of trying to deal with the problem. I mean, didn't have much, didn't have much else. So, where does that lead us, or where does that bring us? That brings us to the present point of, you know, what can be done in our county. And the commissioners asked for information about the permissive license tax. And there's been a great deal of research done by Deb, by Teresa, by Denise, and we have a lot of information. I guess I'm not sure where you, where you want me to go or what you want me to say. I can, I can keep talking for a long time, but what would you like me to address specifically?
One thing that's very evident, in addition to the concern about salaries, is the fact that you just don't have enough money to pick the roads up so that gradually, ideally, we should be able to do so many miles of roads every year. And if we don't do that, gradually deteriorate to the point where it's going to cost more in the long run. I think the first thing that we should consider is any taxes that were permissive taxes that we're not collecting for license fees, for license plate fees. I think that's the first place to look. And it appears, looking at this chart, that we do have one tax, forty-five-oh-four-point-one-six, which is the second new five-dollar tax.
Yes. The second new five-dollar taxes has not been enacted in the.
And if we enact that, then we will collect from all except for four munis, or villages, rather.
Correct. That is correct.
One, Kent, and three villages. And that would provide a significant amount of money, I would think.
Yes, I don't have a, as I don't have a figure for the drop in effect of the munis, I'm not prepared to tell you what that figure is. But based on my prior experience and my estimates and the fact that I went through this two or three times, the fact alone that Kent has enacted it and taken it away is about twenty percent of the revenue that is gone. So, having said that, you know, the second new five-dollar tax is going to yield probably six-hundred thousand, seven-hundred thousand dollars, something like that.
Six to seven-hundred thousand.
Yeah. I mean, I could, I could do some research and some additional study and get you an exact fee, but that's about what it is.
Can I ask, if you would, with that additional revenue, would you earmark it so much, I assume for your labor costs, but for like materials, or, I mean, how do you even determine that? I know that.
In the times in the past, Maureen, you know, when we entertained, the members of this board were not involved in those issues, I do not believe. But in the times in the past when we did that, I said that we would spend one hundred percent of that money on a capital program. The funding that I have right now funds our maintenance operation and provides a very, very meager capital program. Okay? We're, and by very, very meager, I'm talking approximately five-hundred thousand dollars a year is all we have for paving roads and replacing bridges. That's it. That's all we have. So, we get outside money and make that five-hundred thousand turn into about a million, million and a half. But still, that's, as Kathleen indicated, and she's very accurate, that's a drop in the bucket compared to what we need if we're going to, if we're going to try to take care of the system, which is the whole reason that I'm here. I'm here because I'm trying to draw attention to the fact that the funding for this, the maintenance of the county's transportation system is significantly underfunded. And, and if this continues, then, you know, things are just going to get ugly.
The fairness of the license plate fee is that those who use the roads are paying for the.
Absolutely. Yes.
So, it's the fairest way.
It's considered a user fee.
Yeah. Looking at the chart, we have not enacted the second new five-dollar tax.
Correct.
If we did enact that, it would produce six to seven-hundred thousand. Moving over to the column that says forty-five-oh-four-point-one-seven, it says cannot enact if the county enacts. Well, we've not enacted it, nor have the cities.
Well, that's the first new five that, that, this is very confusing and I'm sorry, I didn't create it, but, and you help me if I say something. There was a first new five and a second new five for the county. There was also a timeline, I don't know what it was exactly, maybe a couple of years or something like that, that if the county did not enact it, the municipalities within the county had the authority to enact it and effectively take it away from the county. That is what forty-five-oh-four-point-oh-six and point-one-seven are, is if the county did not act on the first new five dollars and the second new five dollars, the municipalities could enact it themselves.
But looking at the chart, it appears they did enact, many of them did enact the first one.
Let me modify what I said for just a minute, Kathleen, I'm sorry. Oh-six is the original five-dollar permissive tax, the very first one from the sixties. Seventeen is the first new five, and point-one-seven-one is the second new five. And those are all three authorities that are provided to the municipalities to enact the three different five-dollar taxes, should the county not. Now, what you were referring to, and what you're right, Kathleen, is that under oh-six, under oh-six, those fives that are shown there, that is the original five-dollar tax back from the sixties, that the county was unsuccessful in implementing, and the municipalities, the ones that are listed, implemented it themselves.
And those are not an option now.
No, that's gone now too, in the municipalities.
Looking at the chart, the only one we can do now is the one that's forty-five-oh-four-point-one-six. And we can only do it for all but four of our one city and three townships.
Well, you, you also can do four-five-oh-two-point-oh-two. You can do that in the unincorporated areas of the county.
We haven't done this one either?
No. And in addition to the unincorporated areas, if you look at your chart, you'll see that Brady Lake didn't implement it, Garrettsville didn't implement it, Sugar Bush Knowles didn't implement it, and neither did County. So, you can implement it in those four municipalities as well.
Okay, so if we did those two together, it would produce fairly significant, close to a million, maybe?
Close to a million, that would be my estimate.
And so, it seems to me, since this is the fairest way to gain money for the roads and bridges, that we really ought to do this. And the question is, I believe they're authorized to do it just with a resolution, but most people would like for us to bring it to them.
Most of those statutes require two public hearings.
Yeah, they do require two specific public hearings.
But I was getting at the authority to adopt. We have the authority to adopt, should we choose, after we do the process, the two hearings.
That is correct.
And so, the question that we have to ask is, do we wish to do that, or do we want to put this, can we put it on the ballot?
That, that is an option as well. However, in your consideration of that, you must weigh very carefully the fact that that proposal has been on the ballot in various counties statewide for dozens of occurrences, and it has never passed. It has been defeated every time it has been on the ballot. It is an opportunity to vote no against a tax increase.
Well, we don't call it a tax increase.
No, it's not, but that's the way it's viewed.
Yeah, you're right about that.
As soon as you have the public hearing, you'll hear, you'll hear about it.
It really, it really is a user fee.
Yes, it is, ma'am. You are exactly correct.
When we have water and sewer fee increases, it's a user fee the same way.
Not much different. Quite accurate.
I don't think that ever goes on the ballot.
You are quite accurate. That is true. You do, there, if, I don't know if you want to elaborate, but there are various schemes under which this can be implemented. If the, if the board is desirous, you know, from one extreme to the other, if the board declares an emergency and makes a unanimous vote on this proposal, then these will be implemented, and that's it. It's not subject to a referendum. You can pass it and not declare an emergency and maybe pass it two to one or whatever, and of course, that would be subject to a referendum. And you can, as a third option, put it on the ballot as well and not act on it individually.
Mickey, go back to when you said that prior to, I guess, any of us being involved in the process.
I was.
Right, no, you were.
I've been here too long.
No, I said it, not at all. But I'm wondering about the, I guess, the public sentiment or reaction at that point. And did you have the hearings? Did you?
Oh, yes. Oh, we did. We, on two separate occasions, we went through the hearing process, and, you know, a lot of people, not a lot of the people, there was probably twenty-five people in the room, and probably of the twenty-five people in the room, probably fifteen people stood up and said, "No, no, 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 no tax increase, no," you know. I understand what you say, Kathleen, and you're correct, it's a user fee, but this is what they said.
Coming out of their pocket.
And, you know, that's, that's where we're at. You know, let me explain something to you. I live in Brimfield Township. The Brimfield Township trustees just put a road and bridge levy on the ballot two years ago. It passed. Do you know how much I'm paying for that? It's a road and bridge levy. I can't tell you how many mils it is, I don't know. But I'm paying sixty dollars a year to my township for better roads and bridges. Not five dollars, not ten dollars, I'm paying sixty dollars a year to my township because that levy passed in my township.
So, and we have other demands for levies, like the Jayon, other things that need to do. I want to be sure I understood what you just said. If we declare this as an emergency, we do our public hearings, we declare it an emergency and we pass it, there's no referendum, and it's done.
That is correct. Am I?
No, that is correct. That's exactly what it is.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't be, I shouldn't be making statements like that with you sitting here.
You're exactly right.
The second option is that we can vote for a resolution but not have an emergency clause. But you said something about two to one.
It, I.
Yeah, the emergency must be a unanimous decision.
Oh, I see. Okay.
The one where it's subject to a referendum because it doesn't go into effect for thirty days.
But we could unanimously, the three of us.
Either one of them could be unanimous if we chose.
We could have just passed it as a resolution, and then it would be subject to referendum.
Right.
Yes. If you pass it as a regular resolution.
Even if you pass it as unanimous, but not as an emergency, it would be subject to referendum.
She is.
And then on the ballot, we could also put on the ballot, but if we did that, we know in advance it's not going to pass.
There's more than a fair assumption that that's the equivalent of throwing it under the bus.
Yeah.
Forgive me.
But you know, Mickey, no, you go ahead. I think, you know, as you came in and explained everything to us, your sense of what it would generate for you and, you know, it would be for a, I'm assuming a capital program, that people are so attentive today, more so, I think, with the availability of the internet and everything else, that, that maybe our initial would garner more support if they knew indeed it was going for that purpose. It does, for me anyway, and I understand the need in, I do understand it, because oftentimes we'll get those calls even initially before you do, saying, "Would you please call," you know, "the engineers on this."
Sure.
So, there is a profound need out there. I think for me, though, it just does go a little bit against the whatever to, to think about imposing something on folks. Although, boy, I can sure appreciate what you're saying, five dollars in comparison to sixty, but then you had the, you had the ability to vote on that, you know, the other, the sense of the sixty, and people overwhelmingly supported it, obviously, because they knew it would go to help fix the roads and the bridges, move the economy.
You know, one thing that I know that is going to be difficult to persuade the public about this, but it's an enterprise fund that's collected and used for certain purposes, just like water and sewer is an enterprise fund. And with, if we could use water and sewer as a parallel to this, when, we have an obligation to be sure that the water and sewer bills that are charged to people pay for what is needed, so that if, if we're running short on funds, we have an obligation to raise the fees to provide that service. Because although we could give general fund money to the enterprise fund if we wanted to, generally speaking, that should be a self.
Self-supporting.
Supporting enterprise. In much the same way that the engineers' enterprise fund, the license fee, should pay for the maintenance and repair of the roads. I think the general fund could give money to the engineer, but we wouldn't because we have so many demands on the general fund for other expenses. So, if we, if we recognize that enterprise funds are really quite different than general funds, and the purpose of the license tax is to support the repair of the roads and bridges, just as the bills for water and sewer is to support that system, we'd probably hesitate to do it, but if we're convinced it's really needed, we do raise water and sewer rates on a fairly regular basis over the years. We hesitate with this.
We haven't had to do so with water and sewer for some time. I don't know when the last one.
They've been, you approved escalated clause over years.
Right.
They go up almost every year.
It goes up every year?
A small amount.
Yeah, it's went up.
So.
And those ones are very healthy.
And the state law has, and we're bound by the state law because we're just an arm of the state. The state law has given us a method by which we can gain the support that's needed for the roads and bridges. And I guess of all the complaints that one hears out there in the public when you're out, the complaints about check holes and poor maintenance of roads, although I think you do a remarkably good job considering the funds.
I just, there's, it's hard to draw a correlation there because people don't understand the, the funding situation, and they don't relate it to Apollo.
And, yeah, and I think it takes courage as a leader sometimes to do what you think is the right thing.
Yes, it does, ma'am. You're absolutely correct.
For the public, because, you know, whatever we do, we do, some people are going to kick us in the teeth. But, but I think that sometimes we have to just stand up and buy the bullet and do what is the right thing in our own view for the public in terms of road safety, because I think maintenance of the roads have a lot to do with safety. And as we drive around in this time of the year, especially since we had such a hard winter, we notice there are many hazards on the road, great big deep check holes, sometimes where a pavement has even collapsed, and there's, even though it's not very wide, sometimes it's very deep.
This has been one of the most severe winters we've had.
So, the question is really up to the commissioners as to how we want to handle this, and.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
Are you familiar with issue one that's on the ballot?
Yes.
How would that, if that passes, do you know how that would impact the county?
Oh, yeah. We, we are, well, quite honestly and frankly, as I sit on the District Seven Integrating and Executive Committees as a result of the commissioners, this Board of Commissioners appointment, and for that I'm grateful, I happen to be the chairman of both committees, the four county committees. And that program has been ongoing for, we're coming up on the thirtieth year of funding for that program. It funds infrastructure, of which roads and bridges are included, and hopefully, that would continue. Our county sees approximately two million dollars of revenue a year for, divided up amongst the various political subdivisions in the county. That's really bonus revenue specific for projects. It's not operating revenue or, you know, we, we have fixed a lot of, we have replaced a lot of bridges and we've paved a lot of roads with that money. But it's a capital-intensive program, and hopefully, it'll be renewed again and, and approved on the ballot this May.
So, it's not.
If it doesn't, that, that'll hurt a lot of, that'll hurt a lot of people who've become dependent upon it.
So, that's already taken into consideration then in your budget then, I mean, as far as.
Since we don't, since we don't get, there's no guarantee of funding. I have, I have gotten zero funding, one, one year. I didn't get any funding out of the issue two program. We normally are able to get at least a project, sometimes two projects, out of that funding.
If I could, this issue, is it issue one this time? Is not a tax increase, which is important for people to know. But those are for competitive projects, for instance, a bridge or a major repair of, you know, rebuilding a highway. This money that we're talking about with gas tax is really basically the day-to-day maintenance and upkeep of the roads. You have four-hundred-and-seventy-five miles of roads, right?
Three-hundred-and-seventy.
Oh, three.
That's okay. Three-hundred-and-seventy miles of road and about a hundred-and-seventy bridge structures.
Now, the bridge structures, we could maybe try to get some issue one money for that, but the three-hundred-and-seventy miles of roads and the amount of money that you get with the gas tax is diminished, as you pointed out earlier, so that just filling the check holes and resurfacing them just to protect them from becoming major projects later. And then you don't get around to the ones that are little residential roads.
So, it's my understanding that issue one, you can use it for road repairs because I think they changed it.
You have to, you have to, well, you can't use it for maintenance. You can use it for paving.
Yeah, to repave.
It has to, it has to be paving. The, the problem with issue one, obviously, is that, you know, we've probably spent sixty percent of that money on water lines, sewer lines, wastewater plants and water treatment plants, which are all eligible for the funding as well. And consequently, less than half the money gets spent on improvements to roads and bridges in the counties. And that's just the nature of it, because it's not just roads and bridges. Roads and bridges are just two of many categories of infrastructure that are eligible, and we compete against regularly, you know, the city of Ravenna's probably replaced a dozen or two dozen main, major water lines in their city with issue two money over the years. And that's the same money that could be used to pave roads. So, it's competitive, and you're right.
If I could, I think your confusion is that there's money out there, but in order for us to get that money, we have to have match money. And so, we're talking about our capital program, and Mickey said he could take five-hundred thousand and turn it into one and a half million or whatever. We're leveraging our thirty percent or forty percent of money and getting sixty percent from that. So, yes, that's a crucial part of money.
Is that how issue one money works, though?
Yes, exactly. Everybody has to put up that kind of money. So, you don't, you know, in order to get three-hundred thousand, you need to put up a hundred thousand of your own money.
And is it correct to say, is it correct to say that these are major projects, these are not?
No, the only roads that we've paved with issue two money, Kathleen, you're quite right, are, have been our major arteries, our, our level-one roads that we refer to with our highest traffic counts. Why? Because it's competitive in nature, and I need the priority points. So, I have to pick my highest, highest-rated roads in order to get rated high enough, in order to get the funding when I compete against waters and water lines and sewer lines.
Mickey, when you started your remarks, you, I write this down right, your capital program right now is limited to five-hundred thousand?
That's about how much we have. That's about how much we have.
And that's for those, what you call them, secondary roads or?
That's everything. That's everything. That's all we have.
And you have to use or to match for anything, right?
Pardon me?
Is that all you have to use for repairs, or you can use that money to match?
That's the mon, that's the money that we take to make issue two projects when we go get a federal grant, and, you know, generally, we're putting up about the same thing we do for issue two. We put up a hundred thousand to get four-hundred thousand more, so we do a five-hundred thousand dollar job, and it costs us a hundred thousand. I haven't, I haven't done a one-hundred percent locally funded job in years. It's been years since I did that. We don't have the money. I can't. Everything I do now, I have to get money from, from the feds, from C E A O, through ODOT, through issue one. You know, we get money somewhere in order to offset the cost of this because we, we can't afford to do these projects with local money only.
And you do an excellent job of attracting it, there's no question. I think for me, though, and, boy, it's. I think for me, though, and, boy, it's needed and 500, 600,000, 700,000 will be a bolster. I, I do have difficulty in imposing anything on so, and I, I'm not real sure. Were you asking us to do this today?
I'm thinking that we should probably think it over-
Yeah.
-and try to, you know, come to terms. But today, to define the question very narrowly is important. I think we've done that.
Sure, yes.
And so-
Excellent job of doing it.
We have some, a choice to make. So if we could think it over and then maybe schedule it for a vote or discussion, maybe a discussion on Thursday? Is that long enough or do you want to do a week from Thursday?
No, I mean, we can discuss it if you want to call for a vote on it to impose it.
Well, you can't-
Well, either way, I mean-
Jump in then.
Again, you can't vote for the resolution until you have the hearings.
You're gonna have to-
Even the emergency resolution-
You'll have to implement the process, which means you'll have to have public hearings.
Your first step would be to publish for the hearings.
If we put it on for a discussion, this is what I was thinking, put it on for a discussion and make a decision after the discussion, if we're ready to do that, as to how to proceed.
Yes.
If we're going to plan to do it-
That's correct.
-as a, an imposition on the part of the commissioners, that's one choice, or to put on the ballot. That's a choice. So we make that choice. And once we make the choice, if we decided to impose it, then the question is, do we do it as an emergency or we do it in such a way that it can be, have a referendum? And so that's the second choice. Once we make that, those decisions, then we go through the process.
Correct.
If, if the decision is to move forward.
Or you can just say, we're, we're considering it and just do the public hearing on the issue period.
No.
You don't have to specifically say, we're doing it as an emergency.
Okay.
We're going to have the hearing to pass that resolution. You can say, these are our three options.
Right.
And we are going to consider one of them, more than likely one of them. So now we're going to have the hearing so we can hear from the people which one you think would be the best option.
Would we feel comfortable today or discuss it on Thursday of deciding to go ahead and have the first public hearing? Or do you want to wait till Thursday to decide whether or not to do that?
I, I would be fine with doing the public hearings just to see throughout, like Denise just stated, the three options, to hear from the public, to see, to feel the vibe on.
I suppose I, I mean, I would. I, I would like to be able to say, boy, here's a check, Nikki, for that additional 700,000 because I know that you're going to utilize it-
Utilize it.
-to the maximum for the benefit of all. It, it, I would like an opportunity for us to be able to some, to convey that to the public, maybe, you know, collaboratively.
Uh huh.
And again, I'm thinking website, social media is one way. An article in the paper might be another, but of course, I don't see Mike here today. Because I think the way that you explained it initially, that, you know, how much you have, and this would literally double it, I would think that people would think, my goodness, and that means these needs out there, and lord knows, we had a terrible winter. That it might be, you know, more, more embraced when it's presented.
So shall we put this on for discussion on Thursday, Katie?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe you would like to be here for that discussion?
Sure, sure, absolutely.
Okay. Can we get that in, Amy?
I think we already have them in there, but it's for something else from Wind 130 County Engineer Internal Services.
I mean, you're already scheduled for that day.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Good. Okay. Is there further business today with work this meeting?
This was the only thing on your special meeting, applications. Nikki, is there any chance any of your entities could make that discussion?
They all can.
Yes.
They all can. No, the, the second-
And they just go-
The second, they can take it from us right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where, that's what happened with Kent and the others. Is that, so the problem is if we don't implement it, we can lose it to the rest of the municipalities as well. And then your county roads and bridges won't get spot.
Right. Kind of up a creek once they take that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And certainly, I will be here Thursday for whatever discussion you want and-
I want to-
Okay.
Did you want to call on Riley on the other? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We'll see you on Thursday.
Yeah, I've done, well, I don't have a list of things to do yet, but I got three-fourths of it done on my computer.
Yeah, I just-
Excuse us.
I wonder which ones you're willing to take if, because you have a lot of work. Well, they're in the same dilemma we are, I mean.
Well, I just think the townships are more embarrassed.
They, yeah, but they would have the same doubts or concerns that we would have to impose.
Tell me.
It's the same thing as imposing a sewer claim. No one likes to-
So, no, of, of course, but I think, you know, people, when they have to reach into their pockets, it's what proceeds what is an imposition or a tax.
Yeah, there's two with sewer and water too, they, they call that a tax too.
And that's the thing, the tax. Mostly though, they're really giving a connection directly to their homes or something. Very few people probably equate, I use this road and it has a hole in it and I pay my taxes therefore.
They've said the same thing about giving a stormwater.
Yes, oh, no. Agreed.
Agree.
Yep, that's where you're at there. Bonner, Monson, and those three are all the same.
There's an incredible amount of information here that gets compiled.
Yeah. I mean, I helped with the last thing I was reading.
Including the county for Mrs. Leonard, the other one is standing.
Another thing too about the issue one that goes to get through the announce. And we have these special committees set up to make decisions of who gets the money.
You know, I would not have really thought that Mickey's, the amount of money there to Mickey was, or in his budget for the actual capital was-
I just got a phone call from-
Less than, you know, given the, you know, the number of miles and, and just everything he has to do.
Okay. Well, then just getting your-
We will, very good. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Hey, Denise?
Yeah, I have a feeling it's going to help me. You said a one?
Well, they have a one, but I was going to have a 130.
Yeah, 130.
Do you want to reset or do you?
We'll recess till Ryan comes and we'll go back.
Are there things to sign to? No. End up two lots. I'm not saying shit.
Join us.
Good morning. I think we're still in the morning for another 15 minutes.
Yeah.
How's everyone doing today?
Very well.
Good, how are you?
Fantastic.
So, we'll resume our meeting. Do I start?
Yeah.
Here's your bill. Okay.
I'll put all the materials that I collected about the plan into a quick little synopsis of everything that might be talked about today.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
You're welcome.
Oh, we have an agenda, nice.
It's just, it's not really an agenda, it's just all the materials kind of just summed up in this quick little-
The purpose of today's meeting is really to talk about the hazard mitigation grant. And we have, just as a preliminary, we have a, a resolution that we passed with a contract for Annette that was supposed to go from 2012 to 2014, June, June did June.
Okay.
A two-year period, but because, evidently because she asserted as our interim director, she was not able to do this, I don't know, evidently there was a conflict of some kind. So I think our consensus was that we should terminate the current contract with Annette.
Okay.
And then talk to you, and we can do that on Thursday, I think. I don't know if we can do it today.
Terminate her contract today, Amy?
No.
Just do it on Thursday?
So we'll do it on Thursday, just to be sure.
I, you know, I follow everything you said and we did talk about it, but I'm not 100% convinced we have a consensus to terminate.
Okay, then we'll wait on Thursday.
But I wanted to talk with Ryan Thursday and find out, you know, give him your opinion. Listen to her about the plausibility or feasibility of getting something in, so, but go ahead.
No, that's, that's fine. So if you want to go ahead and talk about this grant?
Okay. And I'll show these in a second. Okay, it's a hazard mitigation grant. Okay, and why is this important? It's a grant, it's a, it's a plan we put in place and it's actually two years overdue. It's updated every five years. And it's a plan to have just in case there's ever a declared disaster in Ohio. When that does happen and we do have a declared disaster in Ohio, this, this plan says that Portis County has identified areas within the communities that we can mitigate to reduce the loss of life, property, environment. And that's what this plan does and we go out and we do, let's see, right here. Review the historical data per the jurisdictions, the frequency, onset, magnitude and impact, conduct risk assessments and vulnerability analysis of residential buildings, non-residential and critical facilities, and we prepare law estimates and then we upload it to a state software called Stark. So we go, we go find all that data, put it into this plan so we understand, so if a declared disaster happens in Ohio, we get large amounts of funding to actually do the construction on these projects.
And that's just simply by having-
By having this plan.
Did I, did I understand you to say that our plans two years overdue?
It was, our plan expired August 6, 2012. And that's roughly the same time Annette was contracting in June to update our plan. And updating the plan this time around, except from the past, it's a little more detailed, a lot more extensive. So it's a little more difficult to actually update this plan versus the future, just reviewing it, but it's going out there to the communities.
So what kind of impact could it have, have had on us or have on us that our plans expired? We just couldn't get certain funding?
If Ohio declared a disaster right now, we would not have the funding. We would not receive mitigation money, is what they call it.
Couldn't apply. We couldn't apply.
Would not because our plan's outdated.
Okay.
Out of date.
Can I ask, and you do have this extension that we have?
We sent it in the mail, but Dean, we're going to get the extension, that's no problem. So we'll have a year from, I believe, will be the June 14th mark or right now, after April 30th, a year to finish this plan. Now, there's a little bit of gray area if we still didn't need it, we might still, might get a little larger extension, but reality is we have a year to get this extension done. And that letter's been sent, signed by us and to the mail. That's been sent to the state EMA.
Do you have any of this material that you'll have to put into the plan? Is there anything now that we have available or, you know, any of the information?
Only thing that's been completed, excuse me, only thing that's been completed in the plan, it's all within here, is we brought, John Barber did reach out and sign a sign letter to the community saying, we want you to participate. Because you actually have to have every community participate. And this is the only plan out of all the emergency plans that has to be accepted and approved by FEMA, not the state of Ohio.
Okay.
So FEMA gives the final stamp on this, then we take it back out to the jurisdictions and they adopt it.
And I would assume now that even though we might have a sign letter from all those communities, we need to go back out and get a up-to, up-to-date letter?
Right, it was two years ago. It was April 2012 that these letters were sent out and returned. For example, would be Brady Village or Brady Lake and all the small.
Now, we had a mitigation plan prior to 2012 and it expired at that time.
Right.
Can we use that as a base for our new plan? In other words, or do we have to update everything in it?
We can use it as a base, but like I said, updating it this time around is a lot more extensive. So it's, it's basically, we're starting fresh. We are going to start fresh with a new plan and that's what Annette has projected.
Okay.
And I'll tell her, I'll tell you what she has brought on to me and then make the decision about the project. The plan, our plan was originally from 2007, probably the August area, and it expired August 6, 2012, and now 2014. So as you said, we're probably, we're well on the need to get this plan done.
So do you believe that you would be able to do this or do you feel that you need to do an RFP and hire someone else to do it?
Right, it's, I've talked to the other EMA directors of the surrounding counties and Stark, Mahoney and Trumbull, to be in particular, which are only, which are each staff member and admin, just like Portis County, and the plan is, even the state will tell you, it's way too extensive and time-consuming for us to follow EMPG rules and to do this grant without conflicting each other and getting the work done. So it would, I'll never say never, but every county has contracted this plan out.
What's, what about the in-kind stuff?
The in-kind dollars-
Kelly would do that.
The in-kind dollars were based on 40 hours that we, EMA staff would put towards the plan, which would be me and Kelly. It would actually be subject to change and I put that next to it because John Barber was making a living.
That, that was, again, maybe I was doing commissioner here at the time, when we, when we retained Annette for the interim, and I can't recall specifically, I know at some juncture, she either came back to us, so maybe through legal opinion, that she could not do both because of the very reason you're citing, the MP on the end, that you could not-
You can't, you can't have a conflict.
So that's why it was put in a ban seat, whatever.
If I spend 40 hours a week doing hazard mitigation grant, then that takes away EMPG and I'm not focusing on EMPG's.
Do you have to do 40 hours of in-kind or, is that what that says?
It was 40, came out to 20, 10 and 10, so 40 hours.
Is, is there any, trying to think, to get the in-kind, your time and Kelly's time in the sense of, that would be in working with the consultant?
Working with the consultant, going out to the townships.
And, and, but that would not be them in violation of the conflict. Do we know that? I mean, do you see what I'm trying to say here? If indeed we're going to use your time and Kelly's time, which is fine, and you're going to be though funded primarily through the other funding, EMPG, does that in any way necessitate a conflict because you're working, you're being paid through the EMPG, but you're, you're going to be going out, as you say, to the townships and working with the consultant? Can that be used as in-kind?
It can't.
Well, it can't.
It can't. If I'm working alongside the con, or the consultant, that also includes phone calls to state, emailing to the state, any time at all that's spent working on this plan, including this right here, what could be considered time spent on it.
So it's your thinking now, if I'm understanding this correctly, that you should probably do an RFP and hire an outside consultant to come in and do that, the mitigation grant?
Absolutely. Just from learning from the surrounding counties and how they've done the process. Annette, for her contract, she has asked for an extension, and I'll, I'm going to say two sides of story here, has asked for an extension of three to four months to finish the plan. She truly believes she can get it done within the next three to four months. And that includes sending to the state, which they might take 30 days for review, and then sending to FEMA, which could take 45 days for review if we get it back in a timely fashion. It could take longer. So we only have a year to work with and that includes FEMA reviewing it and approving. If there is a disaster tomorrow, but, or if there's a disaster eight months and it's in FEMA's hands, that's on them and not us. So we could probably still declare for money for mitigation efforts. So she's asked for three to four months extended- So she's asked for three to four months' extension. I've also talked to the surrounding counties and have gotten a point of contact who I have talked to, his name is Jeff Harvey, and has written all of the surrounding counties' plans and they're very pleased with them and the work he's done. That is an option, if you decide not to extend.
Would he take?
Yeah, do you know?
Do you know?
I asked him realistically, with not knowing the background, I gave him a quick little background this morning. He said it's absolutely, it'd be more than easy to get it done within his year timeframe.
And go back now, Annette has asked who for the extension, the state?
The county. To extend her contract another three to four months and she feels that she could finish the plan.
And the one person you talked to was Jeff Harvey?
Harvey. That was the point of contact that, uh, Mahoney, Stark and Trumbull used, if we decide not to extend with the net.
And tell me who Jeff is again?
Jeff Harvey is similar, he's a contracting service that writes the plans, emergency management plans. He's based out of West Virginia.
West Virginia?
Northern West Virginia, right on the state line. But Stark County said they're more than pleased with the work he's done.
So he's done three Ohio plans, uh, county plans.
He's done more, he's done southern counties, I'm not exactly sure how many he's produced, but I know.
But he's done quite a few in Ohio.
Northeast, northeast Ohio.
He understands what has to be done?
Yes. Yes. And that was just the option if we decide, whatever we decide, go forward.
I really believe that it should be up to you as to which person that you would like to work with, so, um, you know, I, I personally think that's your call as to which person to contract with.
Well, it comes back to us, it's our decision. So I would be more inclined if Annette feels comfortable with a three or four month extension. And having known and worked on these type of things, I would be inclined to, to that. But you, you know, your, your opinion is important, there's no question. But I, I, I just guess I felt comfortable to say that. So, you know, if you want to, I, I don't know if we're asking him to go back and rank maybe both of them as to what they're submitting, or ask him to submit something and compare the dollars and the substance of them?
He, he did Stark County's plan for ninety-five hundred and he said he knows how to adjust his budget to reach the sixty-five hundred that we were approved for. To write the plan.
Knows how to adjust his budget, but, okay.
Yes, and I think a lot has to do with what you're comfortable with.
Sure, absolutely.
There's, I mean, it's, it's.
I mean, it may be our decision, but it's, it's your department, your government, we wanna know what you, we want you to have that feedback.
Yes, oh, right, I agree.
What your comfort level is and who it's with.
Right, I, throughout this process, which is, for lack of a better word, it's been awkward on the first day when you meet the person that you got the position over. And she's been very cordial, very nice, she's been very professional, worked along. But there is some feelings that there might be an internal conflict with continuing with her. But other than that, I think she's more than competent enough and she may be professional enough to just stick on the goal and get our plan done. I'm a little confused why it hasn't even been started in the last two years. I understand that John Mason passed away and John Barber was relieved of duties and Annette interim director. But if you go back to the quarterly reports that were done, it's the same excuse for the last couple quarters due to the deputy director, John Mason, passing away. She has emails to back up why she didn't continue the plan, so she has more than enough evidence and to say, hey, I wasn't able to get it done. And becoming the new interim director is.
But that concerns me as to, knowing the crucialness of this plan, if it was a conflict for her, why we didn't make a recommendation to do what we're doing now and hire outside to be, have it done? Because luckily we haven't had a, a national disaster declared that we would be able to provide those funds. 'Cause basically within the last two years, if that would happen, it's my understanding that we would not have been eligible for funds because our plans expired?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct?
From my understanding, yes, ma'am, from talking to the state and others. That if something was to happen, we, we had a mitigation plan, but it expired.
Right, we did have one that existed, so you're saying we, we could not have?
From my understanding, talking to the state, if we would have hit with a disaster past August sixth, two thousand twelve, our plan would expire. It may have been, we would not have received funds or it would have been extremely, extremely difficult.
Or like if we have one today, we're expired.
August, August, yesterday.
So.
It would have to be a declared disaster.
Yeah.
So it.
Been declared by the governor?
By the governor.
So to kind of summarize what we've heard today, and everyone jump in if I don't get this correct. It's a choice between Annette, who will, um, try to complete this quickly for sixty-five hundred, or Mr. Harvey, who can do this for the same price, sixty-five hundred. And, um, I, I speaking for myself, I think that it should be your choice. I feel that, uh, it can be very awkward, uh, the situation that you're in, and that you should have the choice to do that, that's my, my preference. Others who would like to?
Well, I just, I agree with Kathleen, I think it's become very awkward. I think I, I noticed it when I was out there actually for the exercise. I, I think it causes some confusion, you know, when we have a director in place, but we still have our contracted interim there.
Well, we asked her to continue.
I understand that, but, but what I'm saying is, I, I think it's confusing. I mean, I don't know, I, I, I just think it's confusing to have both Ryan and Annette still there.
Well, I, I suppose.
Yeah.
But, you know, I, what's attractive to me is, it, it's so crucial to have this plan and if three or four months could be complete, I weigh that heavily too, but, but, you know, I'm not gonna certainly.
Three to four months, she could have the plan written and then sent to the state of Ohio, then sent to FEMA. So complete.
This other person can too, you know, the only thing is, she is local, he is out of state, but, you know, like, I don't disagree with having to be recalled.
We hired an IT guy to assess us out of state too, so.
Are we ready to do a journal entry? To, um, I would suggest that we allow you to make the decision about which person you would like to work with and.
Actually, I don't feel comfortable making that decision. I believe, like I said, it, it's an internal conflict, if you didn't see that the state OC, not state OC, sorry, Portis County OC. Those little things, it's, I feel like it's an internal conflict, but I do feel like she could put a project on the table. I, we do have a contact that we'd still have to work out, I only talked to him on the phone, so we'd have to go through the right channels to truly meet, and he can meet that sixty-five hundred mark. There's pluses to both sides.
Sure.
And there's minuses to both sides to where they almost.
You know, it's almost behind the eight ball, although, um, I don't wanna say this, to have a figure and, and then someone else says, well, I can work backwards, it would be ninety-five hundred, but I can work, I can get it down to sixty-five, so I'll be as, you know, competitive as whether it's her or anybody else.
And he talked about those.
It'd be nice to have a clear, you know, that everybody kinda came in with, here's my proposal, here's what it costs.
He said he was more than happy to email a, a letter.
Well, I think maybe we should, um, have that done. Go ahead and sure bring forward both proposals. Personally, I think it's a very awkward situation to have an act continue. And for that reason alone, I would support the idea of having you contract with some, you know, get requests for proposals and.
You know, if we're gonna do that, do you have, are there any other contracts that you can try to get a proposal to?
I could research what other contracts or contractual people we have in the area that our counties have used from counties.
Yeah, that, that might be, you know, if we had maybe two or three to look at, well, you will have two if this gentleman is gonna submit something in writing, but, you know, maybe.
And maybe express to them the urgency of our expired plan.
Yeah, there might be.
Which I have, and that's why I made it apparent, if you could get it done with.
I mean, if they get, look at the, the expired one, at least have a base.
Agreed.
Took a forward.
Agreed, no, it's, you know.
If the plan.
Urgent situations.
It's beyond just getting a small committee together to review our basic EOP. This is going out to every single jurisdiction, bringing in committees, what's going on, what's wrong with your community, what can we fix, what we can make better? What has happened in the past? It's just a lot more detailed plans.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need to move forward as quickly as possible because we only have a year. So if you can move as quickly as possible, getting as many requests as you can.
Okay.
And bring them forward, I don't know if we can do it on Thursday, if that's too soon, or if we should plan it for next week on Thursday.
I'll, I'll do my best to get it by Thursday.
Can we have you on the calendar for Thursday?
We do.
We do, yeah, we do actually.
Oh, good.
That's our initial first.
Yeah, maybe.
Standard meeting.
Yeah, how many you've got?
Okay.
How many does he need to get?
Well, he don't, doesn't have to get any, I mean, it's a contractual service, but we would like you to get, um, find out who else has done it and bring forward a report, um, for Thursday so that we can make a decision.
Yeah, review, you know, who you got them from and reviewed them and how's, here's how you rank them. I would assume Kelly can probably, you know, give you some names of people, maybe, since she's been there the longest, you know, as to who else has ever worked in a consulting basis.
Okay.
And maybe some of the chiefs would.
Chiefs. Can I say something?
Of course.
Uh, I'm just curious, I, I mean, you have two people here now who are saying this needs to be done. One person should have acted on this a time ago and has it for whatever reason. So why don't we just hire who the director's recommending so we can move forward with this? I mean, I'm concerned about if something happens in Ridstown tomorrow, that I gotta go to my tax firm and say, "We don't have a plan." I mean, I know it's just two days, but, you know, this isn't like going and shopping for a car, there's not a lot of people.
No, 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 no one's trying to make light of it.
Yeah, but I'm just concerned why we just don't hire this gentleman and get this moving, just speaking for Ridstown.
Sure, sure. I know nothing about this gentleman Stark, but I'd like to know, you know, a little more about him.
Do you guys have anything you'd like to add to that, or?
Well, I think based upon the track record that Ryan has, has mentioned with the other gentleman, he has a proven track record. To me, it's, it's, it's very logical to, you know, it's not like we're gonna be getting pace here, he's got a proven track record, I think we should move forward with this.
How did you find him, did he come to you?
At the EMA Directors Conference, Stark County and Mahoney and Trumbull, all three recommended him. Stark County in particular was very high on him and Stark County actually contracted him to write their hazard mitigation plan. And was more than impressed by the work he's put forth.
Was there any others at that conference that were recommended to you or that you remember?
No, 'cause I was just talking to my northeast counties about who they'd use and about the situation, see how they've handled it, past similar situations. And they both said that Jeff Harvey was who they've contracted out of this.
I think Ryan's being very diplomatic and very kind in his comments about the conflict that, that exists currently in the EMA office, and I think that's to his credit. But I think as, as he moves forward, he is going to be responsible for the content of this submission. And if this is a gentleman that, that he is confident in, you know, after talking to the EMA, EMA directors from, you know, Mahoney, Trumbull and Stark Counties, that I, I think that that, you know, he's, I, I think, it sounds to me as though he, he's going to be comfortable working with this, Mr. Harvey. And I agree with the other chiefs, and I, I think there's really no reason to delay it any longer than we have to. Let's move forward and, and get going with the plan and get it in place.
Are you comfortable with that?
Ryan, are you comfortable with, uh, Mr. Harvey?
I, I was asking you.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Are you comfortable moving forward today?
I mean, from what I hear, I, I think he would be fine.
Are you comfortable with moving forward today?
I'd like to see something in writing from this gentleman.
Yeah, maybe.
I agree, I agree with Maureen.
Get something in writing?
Right, that he can meet our needs.
Right, I'm comfortable moving forward today because I think there's no question in my mind that, um, that you need to make the choice. And you've had, um, recommendations, I would like to move today, but I also feel very strongly that the three of us need to feel comfortable to move forward as a group. So we'll put on the agenda for Thursday and hopefully you'll have something in writing and that we can make a decision at that time.
Or he has like any bio stuff or something that?
Yeah.
I'll contact Jeff.
You know, we can do a journal entry authorizing it.
All right.
Yeah, let's do that.
I would like to have the, the documents. Cause that's usually how we operate.
Shall we do a journal entry for, um, to authorize Ryan to proceed? To bring, and then bring back on Thursday his recommendation?
That's fine.
All right, we'll do that for today. We've taken action today. And we'll make the final decision on Thursday and then it should move rather quickly. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Did we have something else then?
He has a public, not, not with the board.
Pardon?
Not with the board.
Oh, okay.
All right.
No, it's not with the board, not.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Is there anything further to copy for the special committee? If hearing nothing, a motion to adjourn?
We need the motion for the journal entries.
Oh, we do, thank you.
That's right. You wanna take?
Okay, just to say, that's the way, just to say to make a motion to approve the journal entries?
I'll second the journal entries.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Now a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Second to adjourn.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.
All right.